I'm gonna call the meeting to order such as it is. And begin with, again, this is Eric Moore. This is the Concord Town Meeting Study Committee. Meeting of October the 15th. Hey there, please grab a chair and sit next to somebody. Why don't you come sit next to me, Chase? We have some tech issues today, so we don't have a single monitor in the room. So we're going to be making the best of it, as it were. That would be great.
Yeah.
Do we have a lot of folks in the room? I know it was hard for me to find the Zoom link for tonight, so I wonder if others might be struggling to find the Zoom link, and if so, I can just send it around by email.
That would be fine. I see.
I saw, we got a postcard about the survey. It worked. And I'm one of those people that's just kind of built around. So, I'm Shannon.
This is Eric. I'm actually meeting Zoom. So you need to drop from the Google Meet. Check out the Zoom link on the meeting agenda and the invite. Okay, Alice, can I get an act from you? We're we're meeting via Zoom, so you want to exit the Google Meet and join that. So who's sending an email out?
I think Katie offered to, but I couldn't
Okay, Katie did, yeah. Yeah, Alice is in the Google Meet, so.
I just sent it out. I just couldn't find my Zoom, but I just sent an email to everyone who was on the email chain for the comments for the survey for tonight, so.
Again, I apologize for the mix-up. And Shannon, this is just how much we depend on you, I guess. So I guess at this point, we're again waiting for Keith and for Alice to join. I'm gonna begin with public comment and then, then I'll pull in a few more, we'll do attendance after that. So again, welcome to the Town Meeting Study Committee. Our convention has been to begin the meeting with up to 15 minutes of time available for public comment. We have a few things on the agenda. We appreciate general comments at this piece of the meeting, and please, up to two minutes each. And so I'll ask if there is anyone from the public who would like to have a general comment this evening. Anybody online or Elizabeth Moore, I see your hand raised. I'll recognize you, please. Two minutes, please.
Hi Eric, can you hear me okay?
Yes, very good, thank you.
I just came in from outside decorating for Halloween. I have no notes on me. So, so, so this is just off the cuff, okay? Um, you know, I wanted to let you know that after, at the end of the DEI meeting, there were public comments available to be to be had. And and I just wanted to let you know that I made some comments in relationship to what you had presented to them. And I just wanted to make sure that it was with, that the comments were with your group as well. And even before I get into it, first of all, I have to say, great work. I've not been watching and paying attention to all these meetings, but I'm so passionate about what you're doing, and I really appreciate all your efforts, okay? So what I, what I mentioned to the DEI Commission was that I was hopeful that in them providing some feedback to you, that the feedback would be, feedback that would be about how, you know, you talked about inclusiveness, about how they would be giving you feedback, especially about the clicker issue, based upon the themes of like inclusion, democracy, what is right for the people, especially the underrepresented. And I told them how I did so much research on clickers a year ago and you know, saw that so much about private voting or secret voting. So many of the benefits of it really meant, were really for women and for African Americans. And, and I hope that they kept that in mind when they were providing feedback and not what would sway, not what would provide outcomes for them based on their initiatives. You know, that it would be based upon, you know, the true themes of what their group is all about. And so I just wanted to share that, that I shared that with them, and I wanted to make sure that that came through with you too.
Great.
And then, in relationship to that, you had also mentioned, you know, about looking for evidence of shame and my husband and I were talking about it afterwards, and I kind of felt badly that I used that word in my opinion letter to the bridge. Because what I really meant was more intimidation, like not that someone came up to me and said something to me afterward about the way I voted, or I was truly ashamed to say something, although sometimes I was like five or six years ago, but not anymore. But it was really about more intimidation, like if I, sorry, I didn't say shame versus intimidation. And one example that you could actually go back and look at on camera was that while the budget vote was taking place for the school, the, someone in a very high position at our, at the elementary school where my daughter goes to school, was sitting two seats behind us. And, and my husband, you know, my husband and I looked at each other and we were like, oh no, you know, like, you know, we better, we better vote with the gang because, you know, it's, you know, our daughter goes to that school and you know, and, and that can be, you know, that was evidence right there because you can pull up the tape. And, and, you know, or where, I remember at one point the superintendent took some pictures from the bridge and put them, sent them out to all the parents of people voting for or against the middle school. I remember that's evidence. And you could see who raised their hand and who didn't. And then that kind of continued on for two more years with the bridge where they started, you know, describing what the vote was about and then showing hands. And, you know, and there's journalistic integrity, you're really not supposed to do that.
Sure.
And so, you know, we really wanted to kind of frame the conversation, not that we're a minority voter, or, you know, I mean, not my minority, but like in the minority in terms of what our vote will be, or that it's about shame, but really it's about intimidation. Having a very close knit community, right now at 18,000, we're still considered to be a close knit community, especially in our district. And
Elizabeth, I'm gonna, I'm gonna cut in.
Yeah.
I appreciate your comment, but I'm watching the time as well.
Of course, absolutely.
I'll ask you to conclude, please.
Absolutely. On, am I allowed to make a comment on an entirely different topic because it's something constructive? It just has to do with
Well, let's come back to you. So we're doing this in two minute chunks.
Absolutely.
Thank, thank you.
Thank you. Have a nice, thank you. And if I, it's just about parents voting.
Oh no, Elizabeth, we're gonna come back to you. Thank you.
Of course, of course, sir.
Yeah, thank you. The meeting's being recorded. You know, I didn't ask for a clerk. Would you be okay to clerk tonight? Is it okay? Thank you. Thank you. Yeah. 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 Okay, thank you. And again, sorry for all the fumbling tonight. We're working with some technical limitations.
We couldn't hear that comment on the Zoom? If there was a comment by someone behind you, Eric?
Yeah, that was Phil Swain was saying that it was hard for him to hear. And we also just, Kristin Hagerty just agreed to clerk as well. So noted, again, sorry. Pamela Dred, I see your hand raised, please. Two minutes, please.
Thank you. Pamela 13 Concord Green. I understand the comfort of secrecy. But I don't want to get lost the true value of transparency and open and being willing to stand behind your views in a community like ours. The courage to be open with our our choices and required to be good to each other when we disagree is a really good value that openness and non-secret value, non-secret voting encourages how we can disagree and still be friends and respectful of each other. And I think that's one of the main values of town meeting along with the ability to actually do the deliberation and the actual democratic governing that makes a big difference in the town. Many times I have had my mind changed by the important wise discussion that I heard. And a lot of that would disappear if we switch to secret ballots. I remember the children who walked into the first desegregated schools and the courage that that took. Surely we neighbors can have the courage to say, this is how I feel and how I vote in the company of our neighbors without feeling ashamed or intimidated.
Thank you Pamela. Thank you. Other comments or questions from the public? I know Elizabeth Moore, if you, if you'd like, if you'd like, you can have another bite of the apple.
Yeah, sure, I'll make it quick. This, this is something, I don't, it may have come up in previous meetings, and I apologize if it has. But, you know, I have two little kids and one of them is really afraid to be away from me. And so the, I remember the second or third night of the meeting, we, well, we had to bring our three-year-old with us. My husband and I had to bring our three-year-old with us to the town meeting in order to be able to vote. And no one said a word. I got a couple weird glances, but no one said anything. But we took our daughter up to the top rafters of the auditorium where it was really hot and tried to give her a bottle for hours and hours and keep her quiet. And we did our best, but at the very end of it, I don't mean to be crass about what happened, but she got sick. She got sick back there, up there. And all I kept thinking is, is boy, if we just had a parents' room, like there's a library that still has internet access right there at the Concord-Carla High School. If I had a place where I could go with other parents and not worry if the kids yell or scream out and no one's gonna give us dirty looks and, you know, and so I just wanted to throw it out there, if it hasn't already been placed out there, that us, the parents, we, and I've talked to other parents about this too, that we would love like a little private place, we could go with a screen where the kids can run around that don't want to go to childcare and or babies, infants, nursing babies. I couldn't bring my nursing baby, you know, back in 2018. In someplace that we could just have a little bit of, you know, it's okay if the kids are running around place nearby where we can still vote and if that has come up already, great. If it hasn't, just wanted to share that with you that, you know, it'd be super helpful.
Great, thank you very much. That was clear.
You're welcome, thanks. And again, great work.
Thank you. So we'll close public comment at this point. Unless I'm missing someone, we're gonna move forward. So we have two sets of minutes to approve. I distributed those minutes today, I think we'd seen the minutes from the nine-ten meeting from Phil Swain some time ago. Eric, I think your minutes were distributed for the first time today. If folks have had a chance to review the minutes, then we can take a vote to approve. Shannon, please, I see your hand.
Have you taken attendance yet?
No, we'll need to do that now.
Yeah, just also, I think so people on Zoom could know who's in the room.
Got it. Okay, yeah, thank you. So we'll take attendance here in the room and then go to online. My mic is on. Kristin Hagerty, I'll ask if you're
Present.
Present. Phil Swain?
Here.
Chase Thompson? Eric Moore, present. Eric Van Loon?
Here.
Good, thank you. Online, Alice Kaufman, please.
Here.
Thank you, heard you. Online. Where are you, where are you Katie? Katie Bresnik, please. And I'm not expecting Parashar, and I'm not expecting, actually, I guess I'm not expecting Keith Berkman as well. So other people in the room here are three members of the public, welcome. And Ned Perry, former moderator, member of the public, sorry. Carmen Reese, Appointing Authority, current moderator, ex officio. And again, three members of the public.
Maybe just a quick point for those of us on Zoom because it's very, I think it's going to be very hard to follow along. If anyone in the room is in front of a laptop with a camera and can turn it on, it would be a lot easier, I think, to follow the discussion if we can see who's talking. If that's at all possible, but maybe, maybe most folks don't have a computer, but just a point.
Yeah.
If they do.
Yeah. Okay, so actually, you know, I think I will forego approving the minutes in the interest of time and just in terms of the complexity around voting. So moving forward. So Chair's comments, these are a few updates from me. Again, we've got a public forum coming up in the space across the hall here. The Harvey Wheeler Community Center Auditorium. That will be an in-person only public forum. And then a second forum on the 29th of October, Zoom only. That'll be in the evening. Again, we've got the Select Board report out, so to speak, the interim report out on the 2nd of December, and then we're giving the League of Women Voters First Friday Forum on the 13th of December. Last week, I submitted a guest piece to the bridge to help promote the forums and the work of our committee. That may appear this Friday, it may not. I certainly hope it does. Also last Friday, I participated as a facilitator in the Wright Tavern Democracy Forum that was on Friday. And I think the key thing that was interesting there for us is Lawrence Lessig gave a presentation touting citizen assemblies. And I think it's a thing that we'll want to come back to, to learn more about. Citizen assemblies. So I don't know if they're familiar to you or not as an idea, Carmen. Last week, Kristin Hagerty and myself joined the DEIB Commission to ask about the question about voting open voting in town meeting. Is, is, is the, is the prospect of intimidation or the fact of intimidation or the, the prospect of shaming, or the fact of shaming? Do those, do those issues, do they present as an, as an issue for inclusivity? Is it something where the DEIB Commission or DEI Commission had a read on? And so we asked that question and they're gonna get back to us. And Kristin, I don't know if you have anything to follow up on.
No, I think that's plenty.
Yeah. Okay, moving forward. We also had a voter email about a remote accommodation during town meeting. And I think the follow-up is actually quite interesting. Because there is a, a formal, there's, accommodation is available, but I think that we have not had a lot of practice basically providing remote accommodation for remote participation. And it's something that as a committee, we should undertake to work through in terms of both a clearly articulated policy and sort of working through what the procedure would be. I think in a nutshell, it's the idea that the folks who are participating as an accommodation remotely would all in effect join a single Zoom single Zoom room. But, you know, we'd have to think about the presence of clerk or a teller in the room as well. There's a few things to work through. And so there are a number of parties in town. There's an ADA coordinator, the clerk and so on that we should follow up with, and I can organize that. But I'll be interested to see if somebody is really interested in running with that. And then finally, Carlisle has an active town meeting study committee. And they, they've done a survey, they've done some pretty, some pretty sophisticated analysis. The, the difference between the Carlisle Committee and ours is that the Carlisle Committee is a, is a committee under the Select Board. And they have participation from at least one Select Board member as a voting member. But I haven't reached out to them yet, but I'm looking forward to connecting with them. And again, if there's somebody in our group who's interested and following up with Carlisle, please let me know. Otherwise I'll do it. A few other updates moving forward. So we're here on the 15th, and again, we'll have the public forum in person on the 22nd. We'll have a committee meeting on the 28th, should be hybrid. We haven't scheduled it yet. With a focus on secret ballot at town meeting and also the question of electronic voting. And at that time too, we'll go into some depth around the survey findings. I'll talk about the survey in just a second. And then again, on the 29th, the public forum Zoom only. And a meeting on the 12th of November to talk about, really the issues around separating deliberation and voting. The referendum town, the referendum ballot meeting, representative town meeting, and I think we'll, we'll, we'll prepare a discussion on citizen assemblies as well. So moving forward on the timeline, just to sort of talk a little bit about the survey. So far, we've had 670 voter responses. Many comments, and I think within the committee, I've distributed an update today on some of the comments that we've received, and I'll say, you know, there's some pretty direct comments in there and many, many thoughtful comments. And I think it, it's hard to say in the aggregate how to analyze that, but, but it's been really heartening to hear that much from voters about, about town meeting. Not, not all of it is, is easy to hear. I'll say that in terms of the respondents, about one in five of the respondents are people who never attend. It's great to hear from them. And I'd say about one in four are actually under 50. So it's also really interesting to hear from that demographic as well. In terms of some of the big questions, I would say that there is strong support for clickers at this stage. A strong for support for remote participation, the referendum, the idea of a referendum ballot and for open town meeting. And I'll say at this point, that, that the idea of, of a weekend meeting, improving attendance appears to be a non-starter.
Am I reading that as three out of four were?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And then Katie, I don't know if you have any comments as well on the survey. We haven't really done any, any analysis yet, but
No, I think so far I'm, I'm very happy with the responses. I'm hoping we can get more over the course of the next couple of weeks, but I think like with additional folks, I don't expect our analyses to change too much. Because I haven't seen that with the different iterations that we've seen from the kind of export. But yeah, I think your, your overall takeaways are spot on.
Great, thank you. And so looking ahead, again, the privacy in voting meeting and the clickers meeting on the 28th. I'm, I'm, you know, I've already started briefs, so to speak, on, on, on these respective issues. I would like to, it's not essential for this meeting, but it would be very informative, I think, for our discussion to get a clearer idea as to what the operational steps are and cost breakdowns are, breakdowns are for, for electronic voting. I can say that Wayland budgets about 50K a year for their whole electronic voting operation, and they have a standing committee for supporting their electronic voting as, in effect, as a set of tellers. Carlisle is just starting electronic voting, and I'd like to get a detailed breakdown of how they approach operation and what their cost breakdown is as well. And there are other peer towns. I was hoping to get some of this from Parashar. And he may be interested in doing it, but again, I'll invite, if anyone is interested in following up on this, I'd be happy to, to, to engage someone on that.
So, so Eric, I do have one kind of slide mentioned before.
Yeah.
The schools had clickers. They bought clickers for doing teaching with their whiteboards or their left front of boards. And they don't use them any, as far as I know. So I don't know if that will save us any money, but I wonder if the schools, I mean, the town paid for those.
Sure. Good, thank you. Thank you. Carmen, please?
I did send you the mass moderators' spreadsheet.
Sure.
With every, every town.
That's right.
Use what company they use and
Yeah.
etc.
Yeah, 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 thank you. That's a few years old.
No.
Oh, okay.
It's been something.
Okay. Yeah, good, thank you.
It's $50,000 just the town.
Well, they have one town meeting. They budget 50K for electronic voting. Some of that is clicker rental. Some of that is, they use a company called OTI. Some of that is, is sort of, you know, on the scene services from OTI. I don't know how they look at the cost of labor from town staff as part of the town meeting budget. That's a big question. And so how we would operate electronic voting in terms of the, the staff load, consulting load, whether we buy or rent, big questions?
Yeah.
And I, I don't, I wouldn't think that it's for our committee to determine that, but I think that, I believe that if we're going, if we do choose to commit to clickers and we want to see that work, then we'll need, I believe that we'll need to make it easier for town staff to work through that process. And so by, by providing a detailed benchmark budget or a detailed benchmark, I think that's possible.
Yeah.
Yeah, good, thank you. So again, any
God, I'm sorry.
Sorry, Elizabeth, we're not taking comments just yet, sorry.
You know what? I know that some, it's not, it's, I know that, I know about public comments. You mean, at the end of this click, will you take some at the end of the clicker one or the next meeting?
Okay, we will. Good, thank you. And so the, again, if any, anybody's interested in running with any of these, I'd be happy to hand off whatever. And again, on the meeting on the 12th of November, we have a nice set of resources coming in, some, some work from the MMA on, on a referendum ballot. Some readings on deliberate, on deliberative democracy and a lot of information about the New Hampshire implementation of referendum ballot. And again, if anybody is interested in leading in terms of that, that piece of the discussion, I'd welcome that. We don't have a champion, so to speak, for representative town meeting. Again, if anyone wants to sort of run with that. And we have one voter, one voter suggestion, which I already have a write-up on, which we'll talk about in the 12th. But I think someone is really interested and looking creatively at, at how to, to work with town meeting time and a parliamentary procedure, might look at that creatively to see if there's any, any ways to make it work. What we've seen so far is it, it won't, but, but I'm interested in sort of seeing what, what's possible. Well, specifically with respect to, so to deliberate two nights and vote the third requires tabling a motion. But the, the procedure to table requires a vote. The procedure to untable requires a vote. And so the mechanics of sort of taking a discussion item, putting it aside and, you know, on one night and then picking it up on another night, pretty clunky under, under the town meeting time implementation of parliamentary procedure. So there's
Just one thing.
That's, yeah, that's just one thing. And if you imagine a whole warrant full of those, then, yeah, so.
That, that's squeaking.
Yeah.
Are you talking about actually trying to simplify it? Is that a book that's that coming?
No, I would not. I, I think that's a really well, there's a new version coming out for one. So, but that's a really well-developed corpus of knowledge and procedure. So, no, 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 no. But there's a specific idea, yeah, specific idea, right, that you could kind of hack through it and it would not be robust. Right? But is there a way to think about that that would require some innovation? A new innovation? Is it worth thinking through? So I don't know if you want to take a look at that or not, but, but. For sure. Yeah, yeah, sure. Okay, good. Thank you. I'll, I'll forward up with you. Good, thank you. So, moving along. Just in terms of the things that are coming up. So, so Elizabeth Moore, I think we're gonna have another meeting on clickers.
This is, it's, it might be important for you before that meeting, if you, if you, just 20 seconds.
Sure.
There's a peer town, Harvard, Harvard, Massachusetts. And I heard this from a friend. I did not read it or investigated, but it might be worth checking into. But I was told that they implemented clickers and that from a, a cost break, from a cost standpoint, I was told that the League of Women Voters actually had some extra funds and donated the money to buy clickers for the town. So it was a, it was a, it was a donation from the League of Women Voters. And I don't know if it would be worth it for you to check into it, but I just wanted to throw it out there that that was an alternative way to pay for it that I had not heard of before. And whether that's valid or not and what they're doing. But I know they're a peer town. I heard they have clickers now. I heard the League of Women Voters actually purchased it for the town. So that's all.
Good, thank, thank you. We'll run it down. Good, thank you. Alice Kaufman, please. And you're on mute, Alice. There you are.
So it's just a simple request. It's very difficult to hear folks that are in the room when you're on Zoom. If you could repeat what the comment is that you're referring to, that would be really helpful for those of us.
Good, thank you. Yeah. Good, thank you. Moving forward to the, oh, the forums, yeah. So, so the October, the first forum will be across the hall here. The game plan is to put a big circle of chairs in the auditorium and see how many people we get. If there are more people, we'll put up more chairs. If there are fewer people, we'll take some chairs away. If we need microphones, it'll be available. I think a question, this is a really, the format is for a focus group where, where people are talking about, you know, what, so how, you know, what, what their feelings are about meeting, what their experiences are. And so, so I think that both the focus group format of, you know, small, small groups and the idea that people are talking about, again, their experiences suggests that maybe we don't want to record. We certainly want to take minutes for the meeting, but we don't necessarily want to record. Does anybody have any opinions about whether or not we have video for that? Alice, is that you? Okay, thank you. Your hand's still up, so. And again, you know, for the Zoom meeting, we'll, we'll do, we'll do breakout rooms. The basic idea, it's a focus group. We can come back to this.
You're asking Chase to record video for the focus groups?
Yes.
My, I would say no.
Okay. So Chase's comment was no. Can you just cut?
Yeah. Can, can
Lean into here. I'm just, I'm right here. I assume we're not going to record the Zoom breakout rooms. There's privacy concerns on that. It's pretty hard to do.
Yeah.
So why wouldn't we follow the same suit?
Good.
I don't think people like being on video if they're
Yeah.
You know, they're not going to expect it.
Yeah. I think the, the, the committee stuff needs to be recorded, but these are regular people. So, so as it were.
Discussion forums.
Yeah, yeah. Good. Okay. Carmen Reese, please.
Yeah, I had turned my audio off.
Yeah.
I know that the other boards and committees in town that have held forums style meetings, for example, the planning board and the housing folks and so forth, those have not been recorded on camera.
Good. Thank you. Carmen was just saying that other, other, other instances of forums have not been recorded on camera as well. So in terms of forum topics, again, really short intro, why we're here, what we're doing. I'd like to introduce the committee just so we can associate faces with, with, you know, what, who we are. I question one, what would make town meeting better? A few follow ups on that. What gets in the way? What would a good meeting be like? Who is missing from meeting? Question two, what happens if we change the recipe for town meeting? What's the substitute? And so if we don't deliberate as a group before voting, when does deliberation happen? How do, how are people being informed in a critical way about the issues before meeting? What if we don't meet together? What are the consequences of not being in a room together? So the idea with the first question is really to get your ideas and concerns about town meeting. And the second question is, if we start changing things, things around, what's that like and what do we lose or what do we gain? I think the second question still feels rather conceptual to me. I'm not a hundred percent sure on how to lead a discussion with that. But I'm open to suggestions about how we can lead the forum in terms of the topic. Do we have any comments about that or any questions? Katie Bresnik, please.
I like the sub questions you have for question two. The original first question for the forum was also, I think, pretty conceptual. So I actually, I wasn't sure how I would facilitate that, but even asking people, what, what is it like if we don't deliberate as a group? What do we lose? Those specific sub questions, I think, would give people information to go off of to provide us answers.
Good. Thank you. Kristen Haggerty, please.
I think the part that's missing still is kind of learning about how satisfied people are with town meeting and all the stuff I've read, not town meeting, excuse me, how the town is run and things like that. And all of the information that I've read and the previous moderators have said, you know, like, if things are going well, that's why you're not hearing people, you know, speak up in, in opposition or to change. Or people kind of only speak up when something didn't go their way, but it would be great to get a general sense like, yep, we're pretty happy if things, where things are going. And I, I don't know. That's, I, I would love to kind of get that sense and what I, maybe some help with framing that question. I'm, I'm getting at like, how, how well do you think either your views are represented in Concord or the decisions that are being made, you know, do you think they're in the best interest of the community? I think is what I'm trying to get at.
Good. Thank you. Good. I hope to have well, we've seen some of the comments from the survey. And there's a lot to read there. There's thirty pages of stuff to read or forty. So and I hope to, by the end of the week, get enough analysis out from the survey. So we can see to what degree, you know, the, the, the respondents believe that town meeting is working well or town government's working well and so on. I think, you know, when I think about, we'll come to you in a second, Cameron. And so I think the question around yeah, I think we're talking about individual experience within the focus group. Just thinking about that. So, you know, I think, I think when we talk about individual experience, it's providing color. Can't provide color or depth in terms of, you know, I, I don't think, just to say hypothetically, I don't think government's working really well in town for whatever reason. We need more transparency. And what do you mean by that? You know, can you provide an example for that? Or, and we can talk more about that. Then, then there's more color. So I think, you know, if we're able to say, look, these are some of the broad patterns that we see. Or, you know, someone speaks to a pattern that they feel exists, then the opportunity in the focus group is to unpack that a bit and to bring it into their own experience. So, yeah, so thank you. Eric Van Loon, and then I'll go to Cameron McKenna.
I don't have, I'm using myself for this.
Okay. Yeah.
It's a touch of green and then the unmute will tell you.
That's what I did before.
I can hear him. Okay, talking.
Oh, you did?
I don't know if Alice agrees.
Alice, can you hear? Well.
You want to sit closer?
So I would, two things. One is I'm more skeptical of the value of a focus group if, if we have thirty people sitting around and arguing generally satisfied with the way things are going in town. In, in two regards. One is I would think it's more valuable for us to try to hone in the people who do come on specific kinds of things that we're thinking about for town meeting, because that's I mean, again, by December two, we need to be in a position to talk about specifics for town meeting. More broadly though, I mean, every two years there is a townwide survey of everybody who wants to respond and there's a steady response. And at least for the people who respond to that, there's strong evidence year after year that people are satisfied with the way town government is going. I say that in a context that I have found, reading the seven hundred comments that we've gotten on our survey, very, very enlightening and very interesting. But I do really have a question of the value of getting people in here to, 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 to our deliberations and trying to move forward to simply ask people, how do you think the town is going? Without more specific links, the things that we can really do or recommend.
So thank you, Eric. I, I think to summarize what you said is that you think we'll get the most out of the forum if we're really using hypotheses around what we want to do in testing those. Yeah, good. Thank you. Good. Cameron McKenna, thank you for waiting, and then I'll come back to Phil Swain.
Yeah, no, thank you. Thank you all. It's a good discussion. So I think picking up a little bit on what Eric was talking about, I would just sort of put it out there for, for, for consideration, right? Is maybe sort of thinking about it in kind of three components, right? So the first component of the, the discussion focused on what we're presuming that the town meeting structure is going to continue as it is. And let's talk about things that we think we could do to make town meeting better. So you know, the people can have different opinions, but whether it's, you know, how can we make it shorter? How can we make it, you know, more inclusive, whatever it is, right? But hey, let's assume we're still going to have town meeting, the way we have a town, you know, town meeting. What, what can we do to improve it? Then secondly, say, okay, now let's, and, and that's probably the, you know, I would suggest maybe the, you know, more percentage, higher percentage of the time. And then secondly, move to, okay, now there are some alternatives to a town meeting structure that are legally allowed, right? That are things that you can do within the, you know, Massachusetts state legislature and what are those? And, you know, how do people sort of feel about that? And then maybe sort of third is sort of, you know, there's the kind of stuff that people might want to do. I think about some of the comments that I've read about, you know, hey, I want to vote from my couch and stuff like that. But hey, that's the third bucket. Those are things that actually would require a legislative change or a legislative approval that we don't have. Right? So, so kind of maybe sort of thinking about it in those, you know, in those kind of buckets to really be able to get feedback, you know, in each of those categories.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm going to go to Phil Swain in the room, and then we'll move on after that.
I shouldn't say this because I'm repeating what Eric has always said, but I concur with Eric. And we should limit, we should limit these forums to the procedures. Try to open it up to how things are generally going in town. I've been a participant in many focus groups. And, and the most successful ones are the ones that are very narrow. Open up beyond the procedures of town meeting, I think it'll get, it won't be effective.
Good. Thank you. Just to recap, Phil Swain's guidance is focus it on town meeting. Don't, don't make it general. Procedures of town meeting. Good. Thank you. Okay, moving forward. Again, the forum is next Tuesday. I'll continue to work on this if anyone is interested in engaging with me or has ideas about how to shape the forum further, really welcome that. I think if you're not able to come, it would be good to know that. And I think, you know, given our experience tonight, I think I got here at six thirty and it wasn't really early as early enough. So, so if we can, uh, plan to arrive around six thirty for the forum next week, if you're going to be here in person. I know we all have constraints, so that would be helpful in terms of getting things going. I, I'm, I'm not mortified, but it's, it's been a difficult night in terms of tech and I want to see our forum go a lot better. So Carmen, please.
Just one note, I did circulate to the committee and I think it's in our resource folder, the most recent results of the Town of Concord's survey.
Sure.
Which is a few years ago now. It's pre-COVID.
Yeah.
And, and we did learn that the town was not planning to do another one this year.
Sure.
So we, we have older information, but nothing current.
Yeah, that's, it's online too, the town government survey results over time. Good. Thank you. Okay, moving forward. So finally, streamlining town meeting. So we're fortunate tonight to have three moderators, two former moderators and one current moderator. Of course, Carmen Reese is ex officio and current. Eric Van Loon's on the committee, and we also have Ned Perry, who preceded Eric Van Loon. And, you know, we're, we're having this conversation. Thank you all for, for being here. We're having this conversation because, you know, we have a ton of ideas. And as we've talked about them as a committee, it surfaced that, yeah, we did that in twenty fourteen or, you know, so, so I think what I'd like to be able to do tonight is to sort of talk about some of the things that we're go, go through the items that we have on our list as potential improvements to streamline, to make town meeting go faster, shorter, to have a more efficient experience, to go through some of these ideas. And, you know, where our, our panelists, so to speak, have commented about what's limited the success of these approaches? How much can you do with the, with the consent calendar? Can we do more with what's working now? Could we do more with the consent calendar or why not? And, you know, how much can we do before it stops working, before we've taken out too much? To get the benefit for the committee and for the public of the moderators' experience in innovating over thirty years, twenty-four years of town meeting is what we're after. And so we have, again, some, some challenges with format tonight. And I'm thinking about how to best accommodate that. But I'd like to start, and again, you know, we're talking about streamlining the meeting. There are other things that we'd like to do to improve town meeting and its procedures. Less effort to participate, to be better informed and better engaged for the public, more rewarding deliberation. But our focus in this topic is really about streamlining and these items here, expanding the consent calendar, explicit public norms or debate and so on. So I know Eric, you said that you had a few things to say at the top. Would you like to do that now?
I really do. I was thinking maybe start with the older perspective.
Yeah.
I felt
Well, you know, Eric, I asked Ned first and he said Eric will want to talk, so. So are you, are you on, on a?
Video. Am I, am I hearable by people on Zoom?
I can hear you. Yep, we can hear you.
So, and, and start by saying thanks to Ned, because I thought that the link which he gave to us on the committee, not only to his oral history, but the one due Arthur Stevenson. If you haven't had a chance to listen to it, they're, they're really valuable. And add Arthur in, and you're talking thirty-four years, a third of the century of moderated perspectives. And I, I would say that I was struck both by the comfortableness and the workability of town meeting and my perspective from the time when I was a moderator. I loved town meeting. I thought it went really, really well. I learned everything. Teacher was Ned, mentor was, was Ned. And I felt that things went very, very well. And when I heard various criticisms, there was something of a tendency to discount them. If it was parents saying, oh, you can't come, I would say, well, we've got childcare and we've got, you know, a trained nurse in there and you've got, you know, we've addressed that and we've got disability and all of those things. But I would say that from my historic perspective, three things have really changed my perspective overall. And the first is those seven-legged responses, which I, I read. Thought that there was an awful lot of media in there and didn't fit that. Secondly, I've had the experience since being moderator of sitting for seven years in the audience and experiencing it the way voters experience, either in person or watching online. And then third, I also looked at it from the viewpoint now of not me and my wife and my kids, but actually my kids and grandkids and what their life is like. And to me, it is a, a very telling thing that so few participants in town meeting are under the age of fifty. And I was really affected by the number of parents of school-aged kids who would say, I care about what's going on in the town. I'm up to it. I'm up on it. I, I need, I watch, or I even watch on TV. But structurally, I just can't do it. And when I think of my own kids and grandkids, both of the, well, parents work, there's a lot of travel, bedtime is a big deal time. So I'm, I'm looking at it really in different, in, in big picture things. And Um, and, uh, I think some of the basics that we've talked about, the consent calendar, of course, expand it, use it to the max. Uh, and do high-interest, uh, articles pre-scheduled. So, uh, people who only care and I, I think that there could be a tendency from regular attendees at the town meeting, perhaps moderators and former moderators to think, well, it's their tough break if they only care. And it's not at the time, it's convenient for them. Um, but again, my, my perspective is too. So I've, I've come up with my top ten of things that, um, I would recommend for, uh, full consideration. Um, and the first is I think we should limit, uh, individual speakers to one minute. Um, it's come down through the years, if you need Arthur Stevenson from seven minutes to five minutes. I think Ned maybe went from, uh, five to three. I went from three to two and on some nights where there were a lot of people, I cut it to one.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I think that people are, are used to soundbites. They're used to getting news quickly. Uh, I think that for the vast majority of people, you can tell within the first thirty seconds, really, what the person is going to say and that having more people have an opportunity to speak, but keep it shorter.
Mm-hmm.
Um, second, I would keep, uh, alternative pro and con mics, but eliminate the question. I thought that the question mic is a great idea in the abstract, but certainly last year, it was basically hijacked. By the end of meeting, everybody was just coming to the questions. The question mic, uh, they were making statements. They were wandering all over, uh, everywhere. And so many people spoke in the question mic, might be sometimes been back to the, to the frozen cons. So instead, uh, third, I would, uh, suggest, well, one is all, is that the speakers, one minutes each, alternating, uh, pro and con. And then after seven speakers each side, that's fifteen minutes. Uh, the moderator could ask, how many people in the hall have made up their mind how they intend? And again, I think it's something of a myth, town meeting, the number of people who come and haven't spent any homework are really have a stall on the road to Damascus type chain. Um, there, there's a nu- number of times in conversation, I think people that do decide, but I think after fifteen minutes, if, if it's like ninety percent of the people in the room decided, then let's call the, have a vote.
Okay.
Move forward.
Good.
Um, if I think that there should be, uh, an absolute, uh, rule that if anybody is at a total time mic, that they've already spoken that night. There's somebody else behind him who skip over them. Um, and I think, uh,
Do they, do they move to the end of the line or, or, okay?
I mean, if, if they've spoken earlier in the evening on a different subject.
Sure.
Uh, but we get during six.
Right.
And they're the only one left. Um, I, I think one of the suggestions has been that people only be allowed to speak one time per night. I think that's, uh, pretty dramatic, drastic and not a good idea. But I think, uh, certainly there are things, concerns that, uh, you'll get up on practically everything. And, um, uh, don't necessarily want to be into the discussion, commence your meeting with towns at this.
Good.
Um, uh, there are.
Just number six?
Yeah.
Yes.
Six. Um, I would, uh, eliminate, uh, the ceremonial things that we do. Uh, thanking people for their, for their service. Um, uh, with the exception, of course, when it's an outgoing moderator, I think that that's, that's who laugh. But, uh,
Oh, speaking personally, I hope that doesn't happen soon, but go ahead, Eric. Yeah.
Appreciate you. Very good sense, but I've seen it, it seems to have expanded with more and more people being thanked and not straight timeliness. Um, uh, the amount of time for thanks. So we're getting a huge biography of somebody before they even were involved in town meeting. I've seen that happen a number of it.
Yes.
So those, those kinds of things, I, I was also told, I was moderator that, uh, by regular attendees, I never come for the, I don't care about the first half hour of the first night because that's all the sort of procedural and things like that. And while you don't come for the first half hour of the second night, because that's always honoring people. And when you think about what we have learned about people not being able to come and give twelve hours, so that's three nights of four hours. I mean, I think if we want town meeting to be vital and people really, uh, come, we, we've got to take a hard look at, uh, what's necessary as opposed to the nice to have.
Sure.
If you, uh,
Number seven.
Seven. Um, so there's a group of things here which I think save actually huge amounts of tone. But in terms of a person's city, that, that sort of the perception of whether time is being used uh, in the best way, uh, is, is affected. And one thing that comes to mind, and again, I did it every single night, have the fire chief come forward. We give this little, uh, talk about where the, uh, where the entrances are. And if you got, there's a fire, don't go to them. And I, and I think maybe he says it the first night and then thereafter the moderator can say, and just a reminder, the fire exits and if you've got the kids, or maybe the moderator just says it. But I think the perception of, so we all pause while the fire chief walks from the back of the hall and walks up. And I was always glad to see him, but just thinking in terms of how people feel their time is being used, their valuable limited time. And on each of these, I think you've got to think in terms of if you've got five hundred people, you've got a thousand people, that's five minutes times five hundred.
Um, eight.
Eight, uh, town council. Um, I don't think, maybe once in my twelve meetings that I ask town council to come up. Um, but I, my perception has been, you know, Jimmy, uh, that a lot of times, uh, well, first of all, certainly the, the moderators that are here knew exactly what town council were going to say. Uh, it's all worked out. And candidly, I think we'd save it much more in lay terms that people would understand and sort of get to the point and not be as nuanced and, uh, comprehensive as town fancies. So my, I would suggest a rule of only if absolute last resort necessary. Um, and, and again, I've given the town council some up, answered some questions, sat down, couple more speakers comes back.
Mm-hmm.
Um, just not, not the most efficient, you see, that this town.
Good.
Um, uh,
Number nine?
Nine, I think it's very important that town moderator have a, a meeting uh, before town meeting with every presenter. It becomes mandatory. And there'd be a tough discussion there of how much time the chair of the board or the chair of C P C or whatever, how much time are they going to have? And with Bushback, I mean, I know that I was unpopular as a moderator. I mean, the heads of a couple of departments.
Mm-hmm.
Understand what we felt. The work of their department is really, really important. And town meeting people didn't know, um, enough about the background. And so they needed eight minutes or they needed ten minutes. As town manager, I mean, if he and I talked and he said it's going to be four minutes, he would, he would make that happen.
Mm-hmm.
And the part of the discipline on tone has to start, uh, with, uh,
Good. Thank you. And ten.
I think related to that. Um, and Terry, maybe in the spirit of, I think there's a dozen of that.
I knew it, Eric.
But ten, I think we could do a really breakdown with IT having sort of all the materials, the things that surround the table side, they all being bundled on the town website uh, under each one of the, of the warrant articles.
Sure.
And if it's sort of in the, in the real time, the moderator could say, um, uh, introducing something, uh, so, and we're on our article twenty-four on the website. And there's certainly for the people watching at home, but there's also a lot of people that have got a laptop with them or whatever. Um, they could go right to, to the website and have these things at their fingertips.
Sure.
And certainly, uh, you, eight hundred pound ability is remote participation in, uh, number of people who don't understand that we can't just have.
Okay.
But that's a matter for the state legislature. It is a long and complicated process. It personally, a hundred percent in favor of our pursuit.
Mm-hmm.
But, um, we're going to have to live, work, learn to live
Mm-hmm.
the most efficient way we can in at least, I'm going to make it up, three or four.
Sure.
So.
So was that, was that your eleven as well?
No, that was, that was number ten.
Ten point, ten, ten point five.
As early as possible, citizens for fifty years.
Sure.
Uh, brainstorming with ideas, because, um, I know they used to try to smoke that out, doing as often as I could. And sometimes they would know enough to come and ask and just leave them.
Sure.
Keep the arrow and focus it.
Sure.
Get that done. Last tiny thing, I used to get grief from one friend. Uh, because I did the position at town meeting, uh, learn from Ed and continue by of the, I just have a sort of warrant article, X number passes or doesn't. And I do so declare.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and that phrase doesn't really take up huge amount of time. But again, I think the moderator, certainly the plaintiffs could say, by a vote that passes the twenty-five, you know, or fails twenty-five to two hundred. Just everything, there used to be, well, and there still is, sort of a study business schools and industrial schools on time and motion management and how one does everything possible to make a process as efficient as possible. And, uh, during the thinking that we should be open to focusing on how we respond to the people because, uh, sitting in the audience, you just, you want to run the table and say, this is the time with five hundred people. Say, we will be kind of efficient.
Good. Uh, Eric, thank you. That was a lot. Um, I think, I think it overlaps, uh, and no small part was some of the things that we've talked about. There's some fresh things there. I think one theme that I heard, uh, was that so it's funny, right? Town meeting has, in theory, the attention of the whole town. And so that, that bully pulpit, that audience is an important one to get in front of. If you're the fire, I imagine if you're the fire commissioner or, or, or to deliver a public recognition. And so, so I think, but what I hear is that you're willing to sort of look at the ceremonial, ceremonial elements. Uh, the, the, the to decouple those from the really lean focus on just getting through the business of town meeting and not the, not the ritual, not the ritual part. So I think that's it. Yeah.
I could add one other thing, which undercuts what I said on that. But, uh, the town moderator has virtually unspoken discretion
Mm-hmm.
to make exceptions, standing in the aisle.
Right.
And if you've got Alain de Chico, who's been, you know, the principal of the high school for twenty-eight years or whatever. Uh, and if people think of other examples, you could, you could make an exception as opposed to, it's an automatic thing for all the retiring members of this that.
Good.
And
Good. Thank you. Thank you. Um, I think rather than taking committee questions, I'd like to go to Ned or to Carmen, uh, to, uh, uh, well, I'll, I'll go to Ned, uh, please. And, uh, uh, how would you like to proceed, Ned? I mean, I could, we could talk about the consent calendar and, and, uh, uh, go through the list of things that we have. I mean, you're welcome, obviously, you're welcome to comment on Eric's suggestions. Um, um, but since I don't know what you have to say. Uh, Alice? No.
Eric, I think that Ned's tablet is not connected to audio.
Uh, one moment, please.
Either that or is he sitting further from your computer? Because I think it was coming through Eric, your audio.
You could switch.
Ned, do you want to come over here and just sit next to me?
How's that?
Uh, yep, we can hear you.
You're good. You're, yeah, you're good. You're good to go, Ned.
Okay. Um, thank you for, um, having me. Um, instead of pushing back on Eric Van Loon's comment, I'm going to push back on your comment, Eric. Uh, I, I think I heard you say that the town is upset with the town, government, town government and town meeting. I don't believe that.
Sorry. Hypothetical. I was trying to.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll, I'll take, I'll take that as a hypothetical rather than your beliefs.
Good, thank you.
I don't believe it, the town is upset with that. I sent you Arthur Stevenson's oral history from the library because it's so succinct on how the town moderator works in Concord. And the town moderator works in every town differently. In Concord, the town moderator spends one-third of his time or her time appointing the finance committee and working with the finance committee. One-third of his or her time preparing for a town meeting and the one-third of his time or her time conducting town meeting. So as I say, every town, every, every town moderator does this differently. But I totally endorse Eric's comment that town moderators in Concord need to work with all citizens who come to them with questions, with petitions. All petitioners need to be full, have full access to the town moderator and to be able to work with town moderator. Not a deputy, not an assistant, not someone else in town. That's the town moderator's role, is to prepare for town meeting and know what people are going to be saying. Just like Eric recommended, a meeting before town meeting of all the presenters. That's so important, so crucial. And it, it's part of the one-third leading up to town meeting. That's so important, so crucial, and it, it's part of the one-third leading up to town meeting. The, um. Start of town meeting is very important and Arthur. Stevenson talked about the time that he didn't want to talk about a legal dispute. Envied involving Orchard House and he used his gavel when he went to that. The town meeting stood up, paid, paid attention. Some town moderators use gavels, some don't. I strongly recommend that our Concord town moderator use gavel. Uh, as Arthur Stevenson said, it worked in that session and he was able to. Really keep a whole half hour, forty-five minute discussion out of the town meeting that had nothing to do with the issue. That was going on with the Orchard House. Um, so gavels should be used. Um, when the town meeting materials say that the town meeting is gonna end at ten o'clock, it needs to end at ten o'clock. We've had some slippage on that. And I was called on it and I think any moderator in Concord should be called on it when they say it's gonna end by ten. Uh, it should be ended by ten, not eleven, not eleven fifteen, not eleven thirty. That turns more people off. I've had more people comment to me. About what's going on at town meeting. It's going on forever and ever and ever. So we need to say what we're gonna do and then we need to do it. I think your friend is incorrect in telling you to save time by not declaring the vote. I believe town meeting time says you have to declare a vote and that's what makes it official. And that's what the town clerk takes down and puts in the minutes. There had been some discussion about that in the moderators association recently. But you need to declare it. So tell your friend you were absolutely right. Um, handouts on the table. I was surprised that Alice Kaufman brought back a comment from Gene. Gene Goldsboro about large print. Materials not being available in large print. I always had them available in large print on the tables for handicapped individuals. And if we're not doing it, it needs to be done. Along the same lines. Town meeting tradition, uh, was printed this way and had a sort of a summary. And some text relative to the different parts of the tradition. Now, what came out recently was just an index without a sort of a summary of the pieces. Um, and I think I, I would recommend that we go back to, uh, for the voters to be able to pick this up. Consent calendar, um, certainly. Every moderator since Arthur Stevenson has used the consent calendar. I think it's a great device, um. I think some moderators. Take more time to present the consent calendar. And. Um, get a vote on it than other moderators. And I think maybe, um, a moderator should go back to Arthur Stevenson's presentation of. The consent calendar and, and see how succinct he was with each article on the consent calendar. It's there because no one's gonna dispute it. So you don't need five minutes to explain each one of the consent calendar articles. Um, so I think consent calendar, uh, I think certainly consideration to expand it, uh, which would shorten the town meeting some. I'm not fully in agreement that town meeting needs to be shortened, but that's just my perception. Having gone to town meeting since it was in the armory. Uh, we came over to, uh, by Route Two one year and we overcrowded that. So we then moved to the high school. I've been at it for a while. I'm a town meeting junkie. Um, I think, um, it's a great institution in Concord and I think we should keep it. I believe the survey every night at town meeting, um. But, uh, I, I recounted using a survey team at Dunkin' Donuts every morning after my town meeting sessions. And, uh, there were five men who I didn't know, but I knew they came to town meet all the time and I always got asked them for feedback. I think, uh, the town moderator can, using social media nowadays, go get. Feedback, ask for feedback every night after a meeting or the morning after and, and how did we do? How, how, what could be different and try and incorporate those changes? Um, and I think similar to a meeting with the presenters. Before the town meeting, there should be a wrap-up with department heads and any citizens who want to come. And provide feedback on how the town meeting went so that the moderator can learn. At least get feedback and also do, I, I like the, I always liked the. Paper survey that was put out on the table, the next to last night and last night, get people to send it to the town clerk. Uh, my town clerk always compiled stuff, um, so that I would, it would be more or less anonymous. And, uh, I would try and, uh, pay very close attention to it. I'm getting close to them. Before the, uh. Nineteen ninety-six special, nineteen ninety-six town meeting study committee, the participants in that. Uh, all wrote papers on what they thought that the committee should focus on and should do. And one of them actually did a very good chart with three circles on it. The smallest circle was the people who came to town meeting. The next circle was those, next largest circle were those people who. Wanted to come to town meeting but couldn't. And then the final large circle was, I could care less about town meeting. I have no interest in, uh, what, please don't bother them. I have heard the chair and some committee members here want to reach out to. Those people who could care less about town meeting and wonder why. I think we should be worrying about the second circle. And. And try and address their concerns about telling me. Um, I think David Allen, David Carr, Scott Gillis, Mark Martinez, all are doing. Great job bringing clickers and remote town meeting concepts to the moderator. I think they, uh, should be, should have been adopted a long time ago. I introduced clickers to the Massachusetts Moderators Association in two thousand and five. After I'd gone to a meeting of auditors in Chicago with five thousand people in a hall and we each had a clicker and we. Gave survey results instantaneously up on the screen and I said, this is the future. Um, and half the moderators over in Lexington, where we gathered at the annual meeting were astonished and said, let's go. And the other half said, oh, not on my, not in my town meeting. And then most of them were in the West, um, a lot of towns. I counted, uh, over seventy now have adopted clickers. And I hope this committee will move forward, uh, and work with a moderator. Uh, I was actually in Wayland. The night that the moderator miscalled a vote. They do town meeting in a big, uh, a big gymnasium track and all. And while they were counting the vote, uh, after someone challenges count. An engineer came forward and said, you're taking votes by voice and we don't do that. But Wayland was doing votes by voice and the engineer said it would take seven people shouting in the back of the room. To equal the person right in the front row. Hearing, you hearing that person versus seven people. And he then put the Elvis committee together. He's not, no longer with us. But he put the Elvis committee in the rest of history and, and Wayland has had it for a long time and does a very good job of it. Two last comments. As a town meeting junkie, I've gone to. Any place between thirty and fifty town meetings and other towns. When I recommended to a member of the committee that they go to other town meetings and see how they work. I was told, oh, no, they were over by the time, um, we were appointed. If the survey had been done broadly, that you've done with the other towns. You would have asked them if they have any special town meetings coming up. It turns out that Littleton, who was, I believe, a member of the survey. Has a special town meeting, lo and behold, on October twenty-ninth. So that may not be very convenient for you. Um, seven PM in Littleton. Lexington, however, on November thirteen, has a seven thirty PM. They are RTM, of course, but it would allow people to see how an RTM functions. As well as an, oh, uh, you know, as well as our open town meeting. Um, Carmen, how many representatives? Do we have forty-five?
No, Lexington, they're good.
No, no, forty-five.
Oh.
Representative town meetings, more or less forty to forty-five. Um, it's a, it, it's not necessarily a growing number. It was grew very quickly, quickly and early on and hasn't grown quickly since. Um, Lexington's representative town meeting on November thirteenth is rep is discussed as a hybrid. So low and behold, they're gonna have town meeting members at home voting. And in the hall voting. And it might be a very good idea for someone from the committee to go. I thought Carmen could introduce them to Deborah Brown. Who, uh, I would go over and watch Marge Batten's regularly. She was a fabulous Baptist moderator. The best moderator I've ever seen was actually Sandy Gatski in Brookline. He was like a symphony conductor. Um, he's no longer that moderator. Uh, Bedford is having an open town meeting, uh, uh, special town meeting on November eighteen. Belmont representative town meeting is having. A special town meeting on November eighteen, nineteen and twenty. And Brookline is having a special town meeting on November nineteen, twenty and twenty-one. Uh, so there are lots of opportunities for town, for members of this committee to go and observe and I'm sure Carmen can. Open doors for them. They're usually seats in a visitor galley, gallery, but the. The, the people should go and meet the moderator and also meet the technicians to the extent that. They want to find out how the technology is working. Um, finally. There is a wonderful book at the Barrow Bookshop. By John Gould. It's called New England Town Meeting Safeguard of Democracy. John Gould, who's a great writer for the Christian Science Monitor, uh, wrote many, many books up in Maine about Maine. And, uh, this is a, a classic book that's been reprinted recently. Um, and I would encourage anybody who's interested in our. Town meeting to go to the Barrow bookstore and pick up the copy. It's very inexpensive. Um, be glad to answer any questions, but I would be very interested in hearing Carmen. You've heard too much from me. Thank you.
Committee members may not know that, uh, we have. Both of these folks, the president of the Mass Moderators Association.
Uh, Ned, just let me say thank you. I, I appreciate all your comments. Um, Carmen, if I may, I'll turn to you. Try that.
Okay, can you hear me now? Good, okay. All right. Thanks so much. Um, so I'm gonna stick to what was on the agenda, which was. Changes that maybe could streamline the meeting. Uh, as in make it more efficient and make it take less. Um, I'll comment on a few of the things that, um, Eric and Ned have suggested. The one minute per speaker is an interesting idea. We did use, we did do one minute per speaker, um, at our COVID outdoor meeting. Uh, and it seemed to work fine. Uh, but, um, there's always pushback, uh, against it. Cause many people feel that it's just not enough time to get out their, uh, uh, their thinking. But we certainly could do that. Um, I don't know if pro and con microphones make things any faster. Uh, and, uh, at our, uh, meeting this past year, we had pro and con microphones and no question microphones. Uh, the idea of, uh, asking how many people have made up their mind after a certain amount of debate. Um, I certainly have done that a lot of times. Now, I don't have the power. To, anyone can call the question when they want to. Um, I have frequently gotten pushback from entertaining a motion to call the question. Because we've already been going for forty minutes, but there's still people at microphones. And it's a super majority vote, so it's not up to me. It's up to the meeting. Um, but even in those circumstances, there's, um, so much resistance. To shortening the debate when there are people who still want to talk. So I, I, I guess what I'm saying is I think this town meeting, does it take too long? It depends on whether you're in the middle of it, you know? If you're in the middle of it, people want to continue, they want to engage. And there's only a short list of things that they really want to engage on. This year, I think we had fifty-seven articles on the warrant, twenty-two of them were on the consent calendar. Um, we disposed of the consent calendar in ten or fifteen minutes. Um. But we had several articles that we spent upwards of an hour and a half, an hour and forty-five minutes, close to two hours talking about. So, um. Would it be possible for there to be a rule of the meeting that was adopted? Early in the meeting that debate would not go longer than a certain amount of time on any article? Absolutely. That, that could be done. And, uh, I know one moderator, um, in central Mass. Who did that recently when they had, they had like twenty-five citizen petitions on their warrant. And, um, and they, they positioned them all to be at the end of the warrant. And each one was a variation on kind of the same thing. Uh, but, uh, they went at the end of the warrant and they had, um. A motion for the rule, uh, rule of the meeting at the beginning that there wouldn't be, uh, debate. More than fifteen minutes on any one of those articles and it made it possible to kind of get through all, um, all of those articles. So is there anything that we need to spend an hour and a half, an hour and forty-five minutes? And I will tell you, our real-time stenographer, who does our closed captioning for us, told me that Concord's the only town. That she's ever considered charging by the word instead of by the minute. So, uh, when you ask, is it something about the character of our town? Are we in fact very educated, very involved, really like participating in discussion about things? I think we do. Um, but. One minute per speaker, uh, an overall limit on any article, you know, if you have. Five articles that you spend an hour and a half on, if you limited debate to a half an hour on each of those articles. Look what you would have saved. And I can, until I'm blue in the face, say. If anybody's already heard their point made, you know, consider having a seat. Um, I must use something where no one sits down. Uh, so, uh, it is, um, uh, people, people like to talk. Uh, okay, um. Other, um, on, on the time issue, um, ending it at, at ten o'clock, that, you know, that's. That's such an interesting one because, um. It does seem important for people with babysitters and so forth to know that if you tell the babysitter you're gonna be home at ten fifteen, you're really gonna be home at ten fifteen. Because it's gonna end. Um, on the other hand, you have, um. I'm thinking about the night that I know Ned's talking about and there were people who had been there for two, with their second night. And they'd been there for hours and hours and hours to talk about this one thing they wanted to talk about. And they were livid at the idea that they were gonna upset, that they were gonna have to come on a third night. Um, to talk about this thing that they wanted to. um, to talk about this thing that they wanted to, and they wanted to finish um, right there. And so, you know, sometimes I look at those things and I think it's the meeting's decision. It's the meeting's decision. Someone makes the motion. And the meeting talks about it. They debated it, and it's the meeting's decision. So things that would help. I do think that dividing uh, having a special town meeting as a regular thing. If we took all the zoning articles and other kinds of things and and uh, and put them at a special town meeting. And we did the budgets and inevitably you're going to get the citizen petitions at the annual town meeting because you only need ten signatures there, but you need a hundred for a special town meeting. So the citizen petition are going to want to come to the annual town meeting. But that potentially um, could help. With respect to some of uh, Eric's uh, other um, suggestions, eliminating the ceremonial stuff. I actually have eliminated the ceremonial stuff. It is, there are no speeches anymore. I ask a bunch of people to stand for a round of applause, and we clap for them and they sit down and then we move on. There are no more speeches. There haven't been any speeches for a couple of years. Uh, not since COVID, actually, uh, because at COVID, what we did was we had people write down their tributes, and we handed them out. They were in a book. They were in the book of materials that people got. There were no speeches. Uh, so those are gone. Um, the fire chief really likes to get up there and and explain to people who've got their kids in childcare that if the alarm goes off in the building, don't go run into childcare to get your kid. Go out the door. The kids are going to be going out a different door. This is very important to him, and that's basically all it says. To the extent that we think that meetings before town meeting and so forth um, help with time, uh, I do have uh, that meeting. I do crack down on people with respect to their time. Um, our current town manager has a really hard time putting together a presentation that's as brief as Chris Williams put together. It's hard. Uh, but uh, no one gets as much time as they ask for, and that is um, that is a noble tradition that I have continued. I'm always available to citizen petitioners, and uh, I have spent hours and hours and hours um, weeks and months before town meeting, before every town meeting that I have moderated with citizen petitioners. Uh, and I do think that it really helps. Uh, there were a bunch of suggestions that um, that uh, Keith had had about assembling materials and whether you know, you wonder if you could educate people a little more efficiently and a little more thoroughly before they came to the meeting, if they would have fewer questions and whether that would make the meeting more efficient. And the ways we're trying to do it are through hearings. Um, we do have all the material for every article posted on the website under the article heading. We have done that for the past few years. There is not enough bandwidth at the high school for people to access that while they're in the, in the meeting. It is by my whole bachelor to eliminate paper. Um, and have everybody log on to that stuff. It is not possible because of the bandwidth limitations. But we've got it there. It goes in the bridge. We have the hearings. The Legal Women Voters has their forum. The Chairs Breakfast people talk about these things. The Select Board is talking about things at their meetings. Every other committee that has an article on the warrant is talking about it at their meeting. I'm not sure how we get to people, you know, like, how do we get to people in order um, to educate them? Where are they getting the information? I am, I would be, I went to a meeting of all the P T G um uh, leaders at one point, and I, and and at that point was before the bridge had started, and I asked how many people got their in uh, news and information about what's going on in town from the, from the Concord Journal? No one, no one at the table. They didn't even have subscriptions. And I, so where do you get, you know, and they didn't really have a place that they were getting information. So we have to go where the people are. They're all getting information about what's going on in school. So maybe it's the P T G letter, uh, maybe it's the Council on Aging letter. So I do think that getting more information out to people and getting them better educated in advance of the meeting would be a thing that would really help in making the meeting um uh, shorter and uh, and moving it along. You know, um, it does take a little bit of time when town council gets up and and starts explaining things. We have had the tricky thing because we we have had a bunch of things in recent years. Uh, let's take the M V T A uh, Community Zoning Act, you know, a lot of legal questions that um, came up about that. And we've had a number of other things that have had a lot of legal questions. And it is true that the moderator, I I could answer those questions too. I worry about giving the impression to voters that I'm putting my finger on the scale somehow. Um, and that I'm not unbiased, and I'd rather have him do it because he's the town's lawyer and he can do it. So that's, that's my decision. Um, and it does take a little bit more time. I agree with Ned. I do have to say I do so declare so the clerk knows what to write down. And um, yeah, using the gavel is a good thing. I have I have certainly used the gavel when people were um, uh, doing their mass exodus after the thing that they cared about. They just voted on. And they're all making a ruckus leaving the building, you know, whack, whack, whack. You're all welcome to stay because we have more to do here, but if you're to leave, could you leave quietly? So, um, yes, good thing, good thing for uh, for the gavel uh, to be used. Spending less time on the consent calendar, that's really possible. I probably, I think I spend ten or fifteen minutes on it. The, the the hard thing, and could we put more on the consent calendar? We could. I I got a lot of pushback from town council this year on a couple of things that I've suggested for the consent calendar. Um, and because there were substantive changes in bylaws, and he just didn't feel it was appropriate for a substantive change in a bylaw to go on, you know, but they were also topics that had been for town meeting three times with almost unanimous support. So it was like, eh, I mean, what's going on in the consent calendar? And it only takes ten people to pull it off. So, but I wanted to make sure that people know what the topic is. So they know whether they want to pull it off for a, for a full conversation, and that does take a little, a little bit of time. So, you know, maybe the moderator isn't got that quite right, and maybe that uh, could take less time. So I think there is um splitting the meeting into two meetings, definite possibility. An overall limit for deliberation time on any article, that's a real possibility. Um, two, that would save us more time than almost anything else I can think of. Going to one minute instead of two. Um, I, I, I think Eric's right. People are really used to sound bites and um, uh, and I've certainly seen, even with the two-minute limit, I've certainly seen people get together and split up what they're going to say. So a whole whole, you know, like, or we want to cover this, this, and this, like, you do that, you do that, and you do that, and then they get, they get six minutes, three people, but they cover the whole thing, which is great because they aren't repeating it, right? That's fine. So you probably, probably the same thing would happen with one minute, and I'm going to stop talking now.
Uh, Carmen, thank you. Uh, so this has been a lot. I I think um, let me just pause and see if uh, there are any comments or questions from the committee. Uh, uh, any folks uh, from the committee online uh, who've got any comments or questions? Uh, and then I'll go to the room. So you know, uh, Katie Breznik, I see you.
Yeah, I guess one comment. Um, I'm heartened to hear, I think that the time.
Oh, sorry, Katie.
Yes. Can you hear me?
Okay, can you take it back to the?
Can you hear me? Can everyone hear me? Um, I guess I was, I was happy to hear that you all think that um, limiting time on debate um, would make a substantive difference in the amount of time spent at the meeting. Um, I think that would work well, but understand, you know, in the middle of a discussion, people might get upset if they're cut off. Um, I think in advance of the meeting, really publicizing if we were to make this recommendation and this change, publicizing that this is the decision that was made, this is how it's going to run this year, and having setting the expectation upfront could really help with disappointment or or discouragement that is experienced during the meeting. Um, but I think that it would be a really great change to make and appreciate all of the thoughts that you all shared.
Good, thank you. Uh, anybody else from the committee online? Uh, Alice Kaufman, please. Uh, you're unmuted, Alice.
There we go.
Good, thank you.
My, my comment is um, along the lines of preparing before town meeting. That if we had the opportunity to ask people who are, who are expecting to present their view at town meeting, one of the many people who may or may not get up to the microphone in time to actually get their comments heard, whether that could be all caps, encapsulated in a document. So you have pros and cons already available for people before a meeting can read what the issues are. And so people, if they don't get up, if they don't get the chance to speak at the mic, their comments are available or have been available before the town meeting started. Just the way, I think that goes along with the way that what Keith had in mind about how you prepare people in a dance. It includes the major comments uh, for and against any particular article.
So Alice, um, I I don't think I've heard this idea before. I really like it. Um, that's me. Um, so, so it's that I don't need to be the league or I don't need to be, you know, the sponsor of the article. I don't need to be some organization of standing, just a voter, as it were, with with a position. And it's that there would be some way of collecting uh, pros and con, pro and con statements, and then publishing that, not as from the town, but along with the information uh, from the town. Is that right?
I think that was actually one of the things that Keith had laid out, something similar to that in his uh, lead up to town meeting in preparation in uh, Littleton. Littleton? Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, good, thank you. Um, I'm going to shift to the room if there are any comments or questions from folks in the room. I'll get you in just a second. Uh, Phil, Phil Swain, please.
First of all, I think we have a lot of wisdom from our three-monthly today. And I think that participants in town meeting could benefit from hearing it. We all heard it today. But it would help to educate all the participants in town meeting, both the attendees just sort of that are listening and presenters. So if there's some way for that to be presented, to advance the advice and tips, uh, that would be great. And so my idea, just, just one idea is we start a moderators' column in the um, in the bridge, because the bridge is a pretty good source of information now. We didn't, the journal was not, but the bridge is pretty good. And have moderators' advice, whether it's about being concise or not repeating other comments or some of the other comments that you three have just told us. And have a series of columns leading up to town meeting, and people could read in advance, knowing when they go, I'm not here just to stand up and repeat what the other person said or to signal my virtue by saying I support this. But instead, by saying, if you do this, you're going to prolong the time, so they have a better time meeting, this is what we should do. Uh, so I, I don't know. I would love to see this. Everybody hear what you just, I mean, you just said.
Good, thank you. Uh, was that audible online? And could folks hear that online? Good, thank you. And Ned, I'll, I'll mention, I I have to go look in the library to see if the DVD that you did for the Massachusetts Moderators Association is still around. I saw that in your, your commentary.
I actually learned a lot about moderating a meeting, doing a such, two, two sessions on town meeting at the high school with my town clerk and with my um, with my town meeting resource person. Uh, and our wonderful oral historian, who everybody loves.
Renee Garrel.
Yeah. The four of us put on a two session, and we went over stuff very similar to what you're suggesting. If I may continue, just three topics. During your meetings, you're talking about socializing stuff. Um, that's why I think that I'm not on the committee, uh, uh, because I don't know what socializing, how stuff gets socialized. But I think with Katie and Kristen and and Shannon and Andrew uh, working with a committee, you can come up with ways to help Carmen socialize, if that's what it is, information out into the community. Uh, it's, it's all social media and I'm not there. On town meeting by referendum, we had a member of the Concord Battery, and he went up to eat, up to Eden, in Bryan, New Hampshire. It was named Bob Eden, and he became the moderator of Bryan, New Hampshire. And um, Carmen has his uh, three-page outline. I did a, at my presidency at the Mass Moderator Association, I did a special session with all the moderators on town meeting by referendum, and we have a whole packet of material that Carmen has had access to. And Bob Eden said, watch out where you ask for, because if you're going to do debating an article and not vote on it at the time, those people who were going to come to debate it are about a third or less than the people who used to go to town meeting. And those third, much less than what you would do in an open town meeting, have control of zeroing out or changing the warrant articles before it goes to the ref, town meeting referendum. So it's completely opposite direction where you all seem to think you want to be going. And finally, one of the um, documents that I share with Carmen, but I don't see online is a voting in Concord in nineteen ninety-seven, a demographic survey by Donato Bracco and Klein-Frazier. Klein-Frazier got us Klein's clock on the speed. And uh, two very bright uh, men did a survey, and one of their quips was that a lot of people complained that town meeting is run by old people in town. But like we heard from Jean Golsbrough, old town, you know, old people in town are having trouble getting to town meeting. So I'm not sure where the truth is on all of that. This shows that the same people go to town meeting in a proportionate by precincts and by economics and by families with kids as go to the polls. Um, what percentage do you think people vote at our town meeting when it's just that not, and I, I don't like it. When, when it's just, I don't know what's like for it on the ballot.
Sure. Twenty percent, twenty-five percent?
No, it's not like that.
So people who are interested in the town government is still that small a circle. And I hope that you will have success in finding ways, working with David Carr, David Allen, that yours and Mark Martinez um, experiment. I think we can experiment going out to, to, into homes and using software to um, to vote from home. We collected at the town meeting, it doesn't count, and people have to understand that it's not counting. But we should start on that process and see if we can get people, just like I made the recommendation then, ten years ago, and that came through in the town, in the uh, in the town government study, meeting report that I'll give to you, that um, we have not only a separate part of town meeting in the auditorium when they got in the invasion, but we have a separate part of town meeting in the Hoover Center, which is all connected electronically with screens. And so we, we don't all need in the same remedy. So I don't see why we couldn't So I don't see why we couldn't. Kyle Iowa's meeting at a at a um in their main auditorium, and then they have a senior center that they have linked in. Other towns are experimenting. I hope that you all come up with some ideas on how we can experiment that way.
Good.
That the comment there's one comment in your survey that's about four lines, five lines long, complaining about the town not identifying where the expenses are, pulling it together in the graph, presenting it at a town meeting, and what it's gonna cost three or four or five years out. Actually, that's exactly what the finance committee does that Carmen appoints.
Yeah.
So.
That's in the finance committee report. That goes to every household.
That individual just isn't paying that much, and I don't think we should worry too much about them. But thank you.
Good, thank you. Thank you, Ness. Yeah, so go to Kristen Haggerty in the room, uh and then I'll go to Katie Bresnik online. Uh and then uh Pamela Dritt, and then also to you, David. Uh sorry.
Um I'd like to thank you all for coming. I mean, I, I think we could do this all day. This is real fun just because to hear, you know, all all of this. I know, I feel I'm feeling like breakfast, lunches are happening. This is how we'll get it all out. People will gather around the table. But you know, what I heard was, you know, a lot of experience in terms of preserving the integrity of town meeting. Um but still the will- willingness to be flexible and um. You know, but we were really kind of nickel and diming minutes, right? We're we're trying to shave minutes off, and I think that's great and good faith, and I think we can make some recommendations. And I don't have all my thoughts formulated, but I still think there's this fundamental issue. It's like town meeting, you know, to to legislate the business in town takes amount of time, right? It 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 is not, it might not be twelve hours, but it's not two hours, but somewhere in between. And so, you know, reading some of the comments was like, just abolish town meeting. And so I think part of the work of this committee is gonna be conveying, like, we hear that you don't wanna participate in town meeting. And that's okay. We're not gonna take it away from everyone else or the people who are willing to participate. And so, you know, um I think taking all the comments, which were great, and it was very interesting to hear Eric Van Loon that, you know, that really changed your perspective. I know that when I read those comments, you know, some of my thoughts were like, oh, jeez, they're just attacking town meeting. And then I had to go back and be like, okay, well, wait. What are people really saying and why? So I really do appreciate that, you know, the committee's formed. Not entirely sure how different the results are gonna be from nineteen ninety-six or all of the other surrounding um committees that are operating in parallel or have been. But I wanted to thank you for your time and um hope that other um residents of the town kind of see the work that goes into um evaluating what works for the town and and what could be improved, but still within the framework of how it operates. So thank you all.
Uh Katie Bresnik online, please.
Um I yeah, also wanted to echo the thanks. I think this is super valuable. Um I did have a wa- can you hear me?
Yeah.
I did have one question. Um so Ned, you were, I think, pretty clear on your thought about clickers. Um and I know we're close to time, but I was curious, given how Concord's meeting runs, Carmen and Eric, what are your thoughts on the use of clickers?
Indy, I'm gonna jump in if I may, because we'll have Carmen and Eric again. Uh and we're gonna have, spend a chunk of time on clickers as well. If I could ask you to hold that question?
I'm hoping that they will be able to still in that meeting express their opinions as given the person leading the tech and the results, their opinion on how it would work, whether it would save time. Um I didn't know if that would be discussed in that venue, if so, I'm happy to hold off on the question.
Good, yeah, thank you. Well, 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 they'll have opportunity to answer that to your satisfaction.
Excellent. Perfect. Thank you.
Um I'm gonna go to, uh, we're close to nine o'clock. Uh so I'm gonna go to uh citizen comment Pamela Dritt, please. Two minutes, please.
Thank you. I appreciated hearing these comments, especially from the other mo- from various monit- mo- moderators, who are all wonderful. I love it. I do wanna comment about time limits. I know that in our effort to shave time off, I think one minute is too short for most comments. Can we use that sparingly when we need to, when two minutes are way too long, which I don't think they are in most cases. Also, initial presentations, some complex things like the economics of solar batteries and things might need a little more time to make clear than the typical initial presentation. Can the moderator uh um use uh flexibility and judgment as to how long the initial presenters get? And also, I want to point out that I have no problem with people leaving when their heartfelt issue is over because they are trusting those of us, their fellow citizens, who stay to represent them with wisdom. And I think that's a good thing.
Hello, thank you.
Um I'll go to David Allen in the room, uh if I may, and then we are very close to closing. I'll have one one comment to the end. Yeah.
So, that audible? Yeah. Three things, quick, quick. Uh first of all, tech may have been said. I didn't get here, traveling, apologies. Uh hybrid works in simple words when there's a single mic in the middle, not on the floor, obviously, and a single big panel. I realize you didn't have that tonight, but I would suggest never do hybrid again. You got that right, but uh I realize it's a matter of whether we got it or not, and thank God you pulled this off. Second one, quick, quick. Eric, I gathered on the fourth question, you covered the beginning, what the responses were on the first two, but you then said the responses on item three and four, and I didn't follow what the drift was in the response that you've gotten so far.
Uh we can take that offline.
Good enough. Let's notice that uh six hundred plus is on the order of five percent of Congress, thirteen thousand registered voters. Not a bad sample, but not a large sample at all. Finally, substance of my. I ask myself, should I suggest perspective? Let me try anyway. This precious direct democracy actually is centuries old in this town. I may be so strong about it. You are the current guardians of that, okay? Simple words. Uh carrying it forward the next thirty years, whatever. What's in my mind is that uh town meeting is a legislature, and legislatures do one thing, that's deliberate. By no stretch, no imagination, do you want to limit deliberation to one minute? Okay, two minutes, and I think Carmen's suggestion about a limit overall is probably an excellent solution. But democracy is expensive and messy and troublesome, but it, part of that expense is time. And to cut people off from deliberation, uh uh, that that doesn't work. And does deliberation actually work? I have changed my vote more than once when I come to town meeting, listening to the deliberation. And I am a junkie, as you all know so well. That only works if there's a focus there. And finally, on that topic of deliberation. Kind of obviously, the whole point is to end the deliberation with a vote. You can't cut off a vote from a breach if you're serious about making democracy work. Folks have to have in their mind what's been said when they vote. Know it's one of the proposals. I'm sorry.
Good, thank you.
Are the, finally, are the comments, are the comments, the the bulk of comments, are those available to the voting?
The survey comments will be made available. We've been a little bit backward with the packet as well. Um so they'll they'll get out. Uh so good, thank you.
Thank you.
Good. Uh thank you, David. Uh thank you, Ned. Thank you, Eric. Thank you, Carmen. And thank you as well. Uh the lingering members of the public, I appreciate your patience. Uh and as well for the committee. This is really interesting. I I um um would like to keep going. I also wanna respect our time and close. Uh so uh with that, that's nine oh five. Uh I will conclude the meeting. And again, thank you. Thank you, everyone.